I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated, thank you. Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the regular council meeting to order and certify a form, we do have that. We'll need to go ahead and dig right into the Treasuries Report, Linda, can you please read that?
Yeah. October 7th Treasuries Report, payable checks in amount of $305,355.72. We have six major vendor checks, but it represents 90% of the payable checks. And those major vendor checks total $274,713.94. Payroll for September 26, 2025, includes Social Security and Medicare, $278,307.5. One monthly bond payment for $9,901.6. Grand total, $593,563.83.
Right, thanks Linda, do I have a motion to approve the Treasuries Report, the September 9th, 2025 minutes, and the payment of bills? Charles got the motion seconded by Reggie, call the roll please.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Okay, next order Business 3.1, we're gonna do our employee recognition. So if I could get Dustin Goodwin and his family to please join me up front. Dustin, if I can get you please right here, thank you. Hi there, how are you? What's your name?
Abigail.
Abigail, that's a beautiful name. Dustin, if you can scoot a little bit, is it right here?
Mayor.
Yes ma'am. Oh, there's Chief, yep, yes, I'm sorry, that's who I was looking for.
Yeah, I figured you would.
I was like, where's Chief at?
Where's Dustin?
Alright, well, so, here we are, another great start to our month where we're gonna get an honor, a chance to honor our Employee of the Month. Dustin Goodwin is our captain here in the Fire Department, we're gonna have Mike say a few words here in a second, and then I'll go ahead and finalize and close out the thing, so Mike, go ahead and turn it over to you for a few words please.
Yeah, I got here about 11 years ago now, Chief, and Dustin, he was already here, I think you've been here, what, 19 years now, I believe? And he's done an exceptional job for me, everything I've asked him to do. Got to see him go through the ranks of Lieutenant, now he's a Captain, takes care of our fire prevention. He's one of the top ones that comes in and fills in as we need him to. So he's just always been stand-up that way, and been very loyal, and I appreciate everything he's done for us and the community.
Yeah, absolutely, well, I'm gonna second that motion, just because based off of, you know, I get a chance to talk and engage with the community a lot, and everybody that I've talked to since we made the announcement on the first is, great selection, right, and so that just confirms our process that we have to identify the Employee of the Month and of course the selection process, and so, Captain Goodwin, we're gonna present you with a few tokens of appreciation. First and foremost, we're gonna present you with the Employee of the Month, where you're recognized for outstanding performance and dedication, and this certificate is good for eight hours of vacation, so make sure you take advantage of that. Also, there's just a small letter from the city, we'll present you with a mayor's coin, okay? And then lastly, I've got you a gift certificate to a local restaurant here, where you can take out the whole family. Yeah, absolutely, and enjoy the good food there at our local restaurant, so, on behalf of myself, and all of the city council members, either here in person or virtually, we wanna thank you for your service to our community, but most importantly, to our city, as far as, you know, preventing, you know, doing the fire protection stuff, and we cannot thank you enough, and we look forward to seeing all the great things that you're gonna do, so congratulations. Yep, absolutely, we're gonna do a quick photo real quick, if you don't mind, and we'll just take that, and if you don't mind.
Jessica, my five.
Awesome, it's good, thank you, Dustin? Please, you gotta say a few words. You have to speak, I'm sorry, that's the rule of that eight hours a day, if you don't want it, I'll take it back.
I need a whole week away.
Well, you wanna say some words on behalf of your husband then? No, Dustin, please.
I don't know, I don't really do public speaking.
That's okay. You wanna thank your family?
Why you think I couldn't work?
See, you also pray for me.
Okay, we need to get her a day off. No, congratulations, appreciate it, thank you very much, thank you.
Come on, little Dustin.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and go into the, Charles, if you can join me down here, we're gonna go into the Yard of the Month, is Mr. and Mrs. James Hellwig here? Yep, awesome, come on up here, James. So James is our October Ward 1, oh, sorry Anita.
You're good.
Gave my phone back to me before, there you go. Mr. James Hellwig is our Ward 1 Yard of the Month, so congratulations to you, and, and Charles, I know you have something to present to him.
This is for all your hard work. A $25 token.
Awesome, we'll do a picture there, and Charles, if you could get in, there you go. Okay, congratulations, yep, there you go. Alright, is Mr. and Mrs. Bruce Kimball here?
Yes.
Yes.
Come on up. So the Kimball family is our Ward 2 October Yard of the Month, so please come on up here and, we'll present you with the certificate, how are you, nice to meet you, yeah, absolutely. And I'm sorry, I forgot to read it earlier, I'm gonna read it one time and that way we don't have to do it again, but it is with great gratitude that the City of St. Robert recognizes your diligent efforts to our mission as homeowners and citizens of our awesome community, thank you for being good stewards of your home and making our city a lovely place to live in, awarded this 7th day of October, congratulations, yep, yeah, absolutely. And Charles, you wanna go ahead and do the presentation?
Spend this for your Dallas pay.
Don't let him buy no tools, 'cause he don't need no war. Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you. Judy, come on up here, alright, I've been looking forward to this one. She's our Ward 3, which is my AO, Yard of the Month, congratulations, yep?
Thank you.
Absolutely, you wanna hold that certificate with you, there you go, and then let's smile to Anita. And then Charles, if you wanna make the presentation.
I'm gonna say a couple of good words about it. I've been knowing this lady since 1999, and we go way back, and she works very hard, and I'm gonna proudly present this card to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep, and Ms. Kim, I'm gonna pronounce, right, hack this up, Ms. Kim Monkeal?
Yes.
So Ms. Kim is our Ward 4 Yard of the Month, yes, congratulations. Well, Brent will present this to you real quick, and we'll take a nice pretty photo.
Okay, Charles. I hurt my reputation with the mayor pictures.
Charles?
Mrs., you're kind of...
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anita, appreciate it. We're praying for you, and with great gratitude, we know your husband's loss and everything, and the city just wants to give you a small token for your hard work. It's a big, big one, that's okay, God bless you.
Thank you very much. Her one, huh? Yes, please, you can stay? You gotta go home? Somebody's coming over, probably to eat some good food that you made, probably. Her house is the first house you see when you drive into our neighborhood, and it's always the prettiest one, so, thank you, Ms. Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you, a big round of applause for all of our winners. Thank you. Thanks to Charles and the other aldermen who made that happen, appreciate that. Alright, moving on to 3.4, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of surplus property of a 1988 Solair compressor and a 2017 Dodge Durango truck owned by the City of St. Robert, Carrie, good evening, Tyce, good evening, can you please read it as, first reading as a bill?
Bill number 25-082, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of surplus property of a 1988 Solair compressor and a 2007 Dodge Durango truck owned by the City of St. Robert.
Alright, can I get a motion on the first reading, motion by Michael, seconded by Walter? Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Second reading as a bill, please.
Bill number 25-082, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of surplus property of a 1988 Solair compressor and a 2007 Dodge Durango truck owned by the City of St. Robert.
Alright, can I get a first motion, first motion by Reggie, seconded by Mike, Hanks, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Third reading as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4192, an ordinance authorizing the disposition of surplus property of a 1988 Solair compressor and a 2007 Dodge Durango truck owned by the City of St. Robert.
Alright, can I get a first motion, first motion by Michael, seconded by Walter, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Alright, moving on to 3.5, Carrie, if you wanna read that, oh, yes, please read it, and then I'll have Anita talk about it real quick. Read it, yes, please.
Bill number 25-083, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Peterbilt trash truck from Rush Enterprises, contingent upon the mayor obtaining legal financing to purchase the vehicle.
Okay, before we get into the motions, Anita, can you please, I know most of the aldermen know, but I just wanna make sure everybody's clear.
At the last council meeting, I mentioned to you all that on our contract, we had three new trucks and one used, and at the time, we were looking for the, we purchased the new trucks, there wasn't a used one that we could find that we thought was suitable for what we needed it for. And we found this leased fleet vehicle that was turned in, it's a year old, so, and it has a new warranty on it. Jason wanted a, what is it, Jason, a joystick on it or something like that, and, Chris, our mechanic over at Public Works and Jason went to Springfield and checked it out, and everything they wanted fixed, they fixed for him. They put all new tires on it, and as it is now, if we have a truck go down, we don't have a spare, so our guys would have to work around the clock, 24 hours, to fulfill our contract. So we need to purchase, this is a good vehicle for us, we believe.
And this is the one we were gonna do anyway, we just couldn't find the right one, and we found it, so, okay. Any questions from the aldermen before we go into the motion?
On your tables the warranty, if you wanted more information.
Yes, warranty descriptions are on the third page. 120 months, 10 years, 435,000 miles. Okay, since Carrie already read that, can I get the first motion, is the reading of the bill, first motion by Michael, seconded by Mike, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Alright, second reading as a bill, please Carrie.
Bill number 25-083, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Peterbilt trash truck from Rush Enterprises, contingent upon the mayor obtaining legal financing to purchase that vehicle.
Alright, first motion please, Reggie, and seconded by Linda, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Third reading as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4193, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Peterbilt trash truck from Rush Enterprises, contingent upon the mayor obtaining legal financing to purchase that vehicle.
Okay, first motion please, first motion by Michael, seconded by Walter, clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes ma'am.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to Section 4, comments by the aldermen, we're gonna start with our online team. George, good evening, go ahead first, do you have any comments for the group?
No, did we hear the bell on the Sunday agenda?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thanks, George, Charles?
Couple of things, fall cleanup went really well, our employees worked their butt off. Citizen made a complaint about your being in a disarray, and you know, you have a right to do certain things, but it's certain things that you have to use humility on judgment, such as leaving Prestone cans and all cans, and trash in your front yard. Because you know, just as we saw earlier, we saw that a couple of citizens earned Yard of the Month. And when you leave trash and junk in your front yard, it brings down your property value, and people all wanna live in trashy areas, alright? And if you condone that, and you do it, I would recommend that you recheck your home. The other thing is, our employees that work for the city are our servants, and they are doing the best that they can do. And when they receive complaints from the police department, such as trash being picked up, and stuff like that, they have to go out and be dispatched to take care of those issues. And the last thing that the mayor or the city administrator expects is for their employees that working for you to be cursed out and demeaned. And that goes on, and even after reporting it, you know, and doing it the right way, the employee that works for the city goes out earnestly to do their job. And the last thing a citizen should be doing if they receive a complaint is to curse off the employee. So I'd appreciate it, and the council would appreciate it, if you treated the employees that work for our city with dignity.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Linda?
Oh, I have a question, I don't know if anybody here can answer it or not. How many, have we got very many applications for Halloween decorations, do you know?
Travis is here.
There's only four at this moment.
Four so far?
One business, and three at work.
Okay, everybody get your house decorated, call the city and get in the contest, and there was something really important I needed to ask the mayor, but I can't remember what it was, so, no, nothing else.
We're gonna chalk that up as young age. Reggie?
Good job Ricky on that fall cleanup, you guys did a great job.
Perfect, thank you, Walters?
Nothing in this time, there, nothing in this time.
Michael, okay, we'll go ahead and move into Section 5, comments by the administration, and we'll start off with Travis, and we'll finish with Tyson Carey. So Travis, come on up and give us your update. Mark, are you talking about this? Go ahead Travis, I'm sorry, that's you.
So, on the Halloween spectacular, so the plan is that we're gonna actually go out to the businesses this week and next week before the registration, and just try to promote it a little more and try to get the word out there. From there, we're working on the winterization of the pool, the golf course as well, and of all of our structures, to try to get those, all the pipes free of water and ready for the coming winter. From there, we've got Christmas in the park, we've already got four vendors from there, we just posted that up last week, so that's already off to a pretty good start. And then the Neon Park, we've had a couple filmings and photo shoots there, those have gone off, from my knowledge, or having any issues. So really awesome that that is getting highlighted the way it is.
Awesome, and you said four vendors already for Christmas in the park?
Yes sir.
Okay, cool, awesome.
Sure. Would a canvas cover to cover the pool that you have, the tech doing winter?
An actual canvas, the rollout ones, yes, I've definitely heard throughout the different other cities that use it. I don't know if ours is gonna be able to, because ours is zero entry, I imagine they should make something for it, we'll look into that, but, you know.
The best thing we can do is blow out the lines, get all the water out of the lines, and then there's nothing that can freeze and expand and, you know, and go back and forth, so, and I don't think we did that last year. So, it's really good that we're gonna do it this year, so. Yeah, just let us know what you find out about the cover before, I'd be interested to know about that as well, so.
Will do.
Okay, any other questions for Travis?
Is there a flyer on the St. Robert Facebook page that we could, that like, I could share, so people could see it?
For the Halloween decor?
Yeah.
I know there's the one that's on the page, and then Parks and Recreation.
We've shared his post, his Parks and Recreation.
I was gonna share it on my personal page though, and see if, you know.
It's on there.
It's on, it's got the little Halloween house, and then like, ghosts and stuff flying around.
Okay, anybody else for Travis, questions? Alright, great Travis, thank you for all that you do, appreciate it. Don, do you have anything for the group?
Couple months ago, I was talking about updating all the computers to Windows 11.
Yep.
I've got two left to finish that are actually transferred from one machine to the other. I got about five that I just need to go in there and save, update Windows 11, and then we'll be done, all of our computers will be winterized.
Okay, I saw from Microsoft, there was a warning sent out that there was gonna be a time that it was gonna basically shut down.
14th.
The 14th, okay.
So, I should have her thing done well before the end of August.
Okay, alright, great, thanks. Thanks, Don, appreciate it, I'll try to be back, that's important, because we cannot be dead and alone. Jason, from Fort Leonard Wood, thanks for checking your mailbox, by the way. Now, how you doing Jason, please, update?
How you doing? Yeah, I don't have a whole lot, it seemed like September is a great month. A lot of trash, we have about 800 tons, and the version rate with recycling is like 25%, so, took a lot of, diverted a lot of recycled out of trash, but, that was, we got the dumpsters still, the motion to be worked on, got them sent off, but, yeah, I got the wrong paint or something, so trying to get that, I'll figure that, find it.
These dumpsters, explain to me about what they were again, I forgot.
The eight yard trailer.
Oh, yes, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I shipped some off a while back, and probably the other day, he said he gotta mix up a little paint, so, so I was hoping to have, or get set, but kinda gets that back on that.
It's not impacting your business, is it?
No, no.
Or not business, but your operation, okay.
Yeah, we had enough planes for seven days.
That's awesome. The day's still young, like, we talked about it in the hallway, just a reminder, we talked about it in the hallway, and again, this is just for the good of the group, as soon as we get the used truck, the fourth one that we were supposed to get, now that we're gonna go in and do it, since it was passed today, as soon as we get that one, we need to take that one, having a few issues, let's get that into service, you know, so we can get that looked at, I mean, it's still under warranty, so it should be no reason why they can't get that thing fixed and get it back to an operation where your drivers are not struggling to, to deal with the issues, so, okay. Alright, any questions for Jason and his team on Fort Leonard Wood, doing great things for us? Yep, I have a lot of friends on post, and they tell me you guys do a great job, so, appreciate it. Alright, thanks Jason, have a great evening, thank you.
Yep, you too.
Chief, Currington, are you here?
No, he just had to go home.
Okay, no problem, do you have anything? It's important. It's safe, it's important, you can take it. Do you have anything from Chief, did he pass anything on, I know.
No, he said he didn't have anything.
Okay, perfect, alright, then we'll move right on to Steve. Steve, you got anything, please come on up, you're the next contestant.
Just a few things to pass along.
Sure.
We had a water main break on Friday, the 26th, it was happening up in the middle of the night. We was able to make the repairs without even lowering the water pressure, so we done it under pressure. And we also was able to, I think they got done with the water main break around 5 o'clock that morning, and then, so the street crew just jumped right on in, and was able to patch the street right after that, so, it was like, nobody even knew.
Yeah, alright.
That don't happen very often.
Yeah. Take it when you can get it, right?
The road salt was ordered, and I don't know exactly when delivery, I haven't done delivery yet. Been just going through all the equipment, servicing it, and getting it ready for this winter. And then also, one of our meter readers today, while performing a utility turn-on, she was turning the water on, she went around, turned the electric on, and then the homeowner realized that there was a water leak, so, they wanted her to go back and turn the water back off, what she didn't know was the dog that was out front, that they had tied up, had a short, it kinda got loose, got a little long, so, they'd ended up biting her, we took her to the hospital, she, they treated her and sent her back home, so, they have the dog in quarantine now, so, they don't, I guess they don't start issuing shots unless the dog shows something sinister. So, but she's doing well, just sore bruised up, but please pass on our best of her.
And, do they know if the dog had updated radio shots?
They did not.
They did not?
But she was, I think she was getting away from it, it could have been worse, but I think it just nipped her and broke the skin, she bled for a while, but I mean, when she got to the doctor, they, the hospital, they took care of it.
Okay, awesome, any questions for Steve? I appreciate you updating us, and just keep us updated on our progress, thank you very much, appreciate it, that's a scary thing, to make it my dog. Alright, we will start with the left, well, my, your right, Mark?
Just a couple updates left.
Ricky, did you have some, I'm sorry, Mark, he wasn't on the list, Ricky, come on up, I'm sorry, thank you Ricky. If it's not on my list, I'd move out, but, so, sorry about that, I even talked to you today about recycling, I should have known you were back there. Ricky, go ahead.
So today was the first of, well, the second day of our city's cleanup. Knock on wood, it ran a little lighter than it did last year, I'm gonna want to teach myself a winged spell.
It's too late, you already did.
Yeah, so, but it went well. We had a truck that was getting worked on about a month and a half ago from freight liner, and it went down again, so it's parked over at Public Works, and they're waiting on a part for it. So, if anybody sees it over, that's what it's doing, it's waiting on a part.
No impact to your operation?
No.
Okay.
And then I got the September's tonnage report, it was 4,217.49, and average was 191, a little bit less than last month.
Appreciate it. Great man, thank you, any questions for Ricky?
My question?
Yep.
Was the status of the tax paid insurance return for the line of trade-off?
We're waiting on some paperwork on it, where's the paperwork at? So, there, where y'all are looking for?
The title.
Title on it.
We've been unable to locate the original title, so I filled out paperwork today, we've gone back and forth with the insurance company several times, and we filled out a notarized map application for lost title today, that I'll take to the DMV tomorrow.
Awesome, thanks team, appreciate it.
Thanks for taking it.
And I'll just, Ricky, real quick, I'll echo, you can, I'll echo what Reggie and everybody was saying, you did a great job on the fall cleanup, and so, appreciate it, I know my neighbors always speak highly of you guys, so. Alright, now back to you, Mark.
We had a lot going on in the city, helping with different projects, last meeting was asked about an RV update, right now, we have 19 of the 20 spots rented. Right now, we have nineteen of the twenty spots rented. Um, that twenty spot will be rented tomorrow night, so there's still very, very high rental rate. So far, we just turned over two years with the RV part. September twenty-eighth, we opened in twenty twenty-three. So far, the revenues generated from that's been two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars plus. So, on that pace, another fifteen, half years, five years, then the revenue will supersede the expenses we put into that, yes, ma'am?
When you say rented, is that short-term rentals or those long-term rentals or?
We have about four spots, Ms. Linda, that turn over quite a bit. The other sixteen are long-term rentals, um, with people that train on Fort Leonard Wood and that type of thing. Um, I wanna say we have three or four of the pull-through sites in the middle, towards the top, closest to the Audi, that turn over and notice there are short-time rentals. And they, they pretty much stay full. Like I said, one empty yesterday, it's empty today, and it'll be rented tomorrow, and that's the only one that we've been selling right now. Um, so that's an update on that.
Mark, quick question on that, not to put you on the spot, but could you give an estimation of what, if someone was to ask you the occupancy rate for September, is that like ninety-five percent?
Uh, hang on just a second, let me show you with a graph, I'll be easier. I would say we're in the high nineties.
High nineties, okay.
That's just me.
That's good. Someone asked me the other day and I told them it was in the nineties, so.
Yeah, um, Travis, I wanted to say, like, how many openings were this month? I remember looking, I had more than two at a time.
Yeah.
So it's mainly been, you know, they'll, they'll come in, they'll wait for two or three days, it'll be empty for one, wait for two or three days, empty. So it's kinda sporadic like that between the three or four sites, but I would say we're ninety-eight percent rented.
Yeah, and it's really good that we have the sixteen long terms, because that's just constant revenue.
Right, that's constant, and it's gonna be doing this.
Thanks.
Also, I was going to show you, I don't have it up on the TV, so if people are viewing in, but we are slated with Don's help and the team with the city. We are slated for our new website to go live on Friday. This is kinda what it'll look like, um, but, Ms. Linda, you asked about the Facebook post. It is on the website, so whenever that goes live, I know it's on both Facebook as well as our live feed. So it is pinned on Facebook to the top of Halloween decorating contest, as well as the website. When we revised the website, got it updated, it'll go live this Friday. On your desk is a flyer that will be passed now around town, along with the website is an app. And it's pretty much everything St. Robert in your pocket. Um, it'll have events, it'll have notifications, uh, it'll have Facebook posts, live feed, and it'll also have a link to the full website. That way, anything that you are wanting to go about City of St. Robert, you can get it from the app, and it's able to be downloaded both Android and Apple at this time. Um, on the post, so there's a QR code, you can just take a picture of that, it'll go to whatever browser you use, and you can actually put it on your phone and start utilizing that now. Um, but as of Friday, you'll see a transition of the website, it'll look a little bit different, it'll look like this. And then from that point, you'll be able to use notifications and that type of thing from there.
This one asked for something sent to you here.
Okay.
Okay, this is that thing that you just gave us and I downloaded it, and there's the thing, there's no way to share it.
Okay. On the Facebook, whenever you go to Facebook, that'll be the post that it is. There'll be, there'll be a post, I'll have to show it to you.
I don't have it on Facebook, I didn't see it, okay.
If not, I'll send it to you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know it's on there, but I don't wanna share it too much, because it inundates our feed. Um, but if not, we'll probably pin it back to the top if it's not there now, so. Like Travis said, he's gonna be going around town talking businesses. Um, Anita and I drove through Linsman, Sawmill yesterday and saw the house at the top of the hill, took pictures, sent it to Mayor Breckridge and said, hey, looks like there might be some competition. So we're, we're hoping that that resonates well, there are some others that were decorating yesterday when we went through. And we said, you know, hey, we'll go back through and maybe get you to sign up, because we do have a lot of, you know, people out there decorating, trying to get ready for Halloween, you know, it's, one night, I know Sawmill and Linsman, that's one area, there's other areas that really embrace this for the kids, so we just wanna get that out there and, share these addresses so people go out and enjoy that, so.
One day, you're grading again, Travis? I gotta make sure I'm grading.
It was the seventh, it ends the seventeenth, and then.
Like, it's like three days before Halloween.
Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth of the year.
Twenty-sixth, all right.
And if we don't have enough, then we'll probably just share the addresses and say, hey, these addresses are participating, go and trick or treat at their house, it's each thing. So we've got kind of a backup plan if we don't have a lot of participation. With it being the first year, you know, we wanted to do a success, so just show you that.
What, I asked, what prize are you offering, who wins?
The only thing we advertised was just.
Bragging rights.
Right, bragging rights, hey, this is the champion for this year, we didn't have anything this year to really as a prize, so.
Well, Sawmill has a competition.
Oh.
Yeah, so the winner gets fifty dollar certificate and the runner-up gets twenty-five dollars.
Oh, there was a man with bones in his yard, did cross from you.
Ridge creepy as well, ridge creepy as well.
Did you see it?
What?
The guy that has the bones in his yard next to you?
Yeah, next to me, yeah.
Yeah.
A dramatic wild appliance rescue that might be the coolest thing you'll see all through the line, a snow line.
Hey, Harold, can you turn my, turn my place?
Is there any questions for me?
Um, no. Oh, um, app. The, when I downloaded it a couple of weeks ago, it did not ask me to sign up for notifications. Will that happen on Friday, do you think?
I will have to check on that, we have a launch webinar, a Zoom on Wednesday.
Okay.
I'll write that down, make sure that's one of the questions.
Yeah.
Right now, we only have one group notification, so I don't know if you automatically go into that. We'll ask Angela that question.
Okay, cool. Real quick, Mark, thank you. I, I know this was a task that you were not prepared or thinking that you were gonna add to your plate, and it has been monumental to transform us from the old to the new, and, and I know there's been a huge team effort, right? But, but really, the driving force with you and all the directors and folks to get this up and running, I truly believe this is going to really, uh, create a lot more attention towards the city with the app and, and, and the webpage. So, thanks to you for all the hard work, so appreciate it. All right, tough Fred.
Okay, so, um, as of this afternoon, um, our current bank balance is two point six. Uh, we just had, um, our taxes, our sales tax revenue hit the, hit the account, um, this afternoon. Uh, general sales tax was three hundred and ten, capital group was hundred and fifty-five, transportation hundred and fifty-four. Um, use tax two was thirteen, uh, use tax one is forty-eight, and park sales tax was seventy-seven. Um, just so y'all know, it's all getting ready to happen from the fourteenth of this month to about the eleventh of next month, we're gonna have about one point two million come out of that account. And this, um, there's, uh, a COP for four hundred eighty-five thousand due, there's a bond reserve, um, two hundred and fifty thousand. And then we have, one, two, three, four, five, five lease purchases that are all due between, uh, first November to the first December. Um, then we have our typical, our yearly, our monthly, um, COP that comes out for ninety-nine hundred dollars every month. Then, uh, on a good note, uh, bills went out, and about one, uh, utility bills, about one point one is what we billed out this, this month. This is for August usage, so it wasn't the greatest month, it wasn't the coolest month, it wasn't the hottest month, it's still one point one is what we billed out. And, um, also, we finally were getting able to get the notifications for delinquent notices working properly. Um, if anybody asks you, uh, yesterday, we notified, um, delinquent customers via phone calls or text messaging. Um, we will be able to, um, also send out emails eventually with that once they sign up for it, and that's with this new program.
About how many delinquents, approximately twenty, fifty, hundred, ninety?
Normally, when we start off, it's about five hundred delinquents, and then by the time we get to the cutoff day, it's about forty.
Okay.
So our, our, I mean, our cutoff is, you know, it's about anywhere from eighteen to twenty apiece for me, we're just gonna take care of. But, but with that notification, plus the ladies giving calls, the ones that we couldn't make contact with, didn't answer, whatever, they'll get, they'll try again to get hold of them, if they can't get hold of them, they will send out the meter readers with yellow notifications, let them know that we're getting ready to shut you off.
I have two questions. Frederick, how much, uh, was the balance at the end of December for the city?
I will not know what that is, we have too many, too many big accounts that's getting ready to come up. We have the, um, Birch Tree project that, as soon as that, uh, bid, uh, bid opening starts and we can see what's going there, and we have the, um, there's a couple of big projects that's, you know, two hundred plus, so I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna know what that, uh, end of the year number's gonna be.
It's, you get, we own a crystal ball, so.
Okay.
Sewer, uh, was doubled for some citizens, uh, they were complaining about getting, getting double charges for sewer bill.
Okay, um, their sewer bill is based off their water usage, so if they were really watering their yards this summer, I mean, we have, we've been in a drought for the last three months, so if you're out there watering your yard to keep your grass green, you're gonna pay for it with your sewer fees. We have inside the city limits, if you have city water, you have the opportunity, it's not cheap, to have it set, but it'll pay off in the long run. You can have a separate irrigation meter put in, and you're only paying when you go to water your yard or your garden or fill your pool. You're only built, you're only paying for the water usage there. If you do not have that irrigation meter, whatever goes to that meter for your yard, washing your cars, linking faucets, running toilets, you're gonna be billed for a sewer.
Thanks. And I would just say that if there's any citizen that, that has a discrepancy or what they believe is a discrepancy in their bill, the best thing that they can do is to come to City Hall, talk to the team, and, and we'll, we'll look at it. And I would just say this, because it happened to me one time, a long time ago, um, where my bill was a little bit higher than normal, and the city, all they did was just send out the meter reader again, got the reconfirmed number, because it just maybe misread, and the renumber got refixed, and they fixed my bill, and they never charged me, and everything was good to go, and so that's the best way to take care of that, so, okay. Good, thanks, Fred, appreciate it, thanks for all that you do. Uh, any other questions for Fred before we move on? Okay, Dana, you're up.
Um, as previously mentioned, I've been working on that insurance claim with the company, trying to get resolution there. The latest thing was to, like I mentioned earlier, um, submit for our lost titles, so I'll be taking care of that. Hopefully, I have a good follow-up next council meeting for you with that. Um, the other thing is applicant stack, the applicant tracking software, people can apply for the city jobs, it's up and running, it's doing very well. Um, and it has its own, um, link on the new website, it's gonna be coming out, like Mark talked about on Friday, for employment opportunities. So if, if someone is on the city website, they can click employment opportunities and it will take them directly into applicant stack, which looks like it's now part of our city website, so.
Is that a tab on the website, Mark?
Yes.
Is that one of the tabs on the right-hand side?
It's on the right-hand side, plus it's also got a big green push button on the right.
Okay, I want it to be visible, so.
It is, it looks.
They don't have to go find it on the website?
No, it's pretty easy.
Appreciate, thank you both for collaborating, because that was gonna be my question, is it's gotta be on the website, something that they can likely see immediately, so. Good, I'm glad to hear the system's working well, so. All right, anything else, Dana? Thanks for all that you do, Anita?
I've just got a few things tonight, I get the honor of doing some feel-good stuff, so. I received a call from Anna at Phelps Focus, and we were elected Best of Pulaski County for Destination with the Neon Park. So, I mean, that was awesome.
I know I voted for it for a few times.
I'm saying numerous times, numerous times. So, I've shared with you the last couple of months, the magazines that we've been featured in, so we have a new batch. So, we were in the Show Me Missouri magazine, I'll pass it around, the Pulaski County Newcomers Guide, we're in that.
Front page.
And then the Route sixty-six, uh, front page, and then the River Hills Traveler, um, it's a magazine that goes out, and we got a front page on that. The State of Missouri had a team that interviewed the mayor and did a little video, uh, at the Neon Park, so hopefully we'll get that and be able to show you, and, what was the other magazine, Rural Missouri?
Rural Missouri.
So we have some more that's doing it, so it's just exciting, uh, to be able to share that, and I always try to get an extra publication so we can put it in the museum for years to come, where, you know, we were featured, and that turns out, out really well. We are members, active members in the Pulaski County Growth Alliance, and they recently gave out ten small business five hundred dollar grants, and I was just so proud to be part of that, and to see those businesses and to be able to help them. Charles came, and, um, it was just awesome, it really was.
And I talked to us a few of the businesses, and for them, it was meant a lot, because they were either able to buy something to improve their business, whether it was a pinball machine for their, uh, for their business, or to do something, um, just to make their business better, and so that was a quick three thousand dollars that got pumped into the economy, so.
So. The St. Robert Transportation District asked me to share with you all tonight a study they had contracted with Archer Elgin on, and I'm sorry, I have more, but this is what they gave me to everybody have to share. But, uh, they had a traffic study done, and Archer subbed it out to CVV Transportation, and we've used them before on it. And the areas they looked at were, um, they took the twenty twenty-fours when they started it, took the twenty twenty-four conditions, and they built it out to twenty forty-four. So, um, they did, if you can look on your little flyer, they did old Route sixty-six, the Business Loop and Highway F, and they looked at a potential roundabout. They did old Route sixty-six and Business Loop forty-four on Ziggibine Road, and they did Ziggibine Road at Phelps Road, Ziggibine Connector Road. They looked at old Route sixty-six, Business Loop and St. Robert Boulevard, they looked at St. Robert Boulevard and McKinnon Street, Carson Boulevard and St. Robert Boulevard, St. Robert Boulevard and Highway Y, Highway Y and Liberty Drive and Highway Y and Helm Drive. Um, so they did a short presentation at the last transportation meeting in September. November the twenty-fourth is the, uh, annual meeting, and CVV will be doing a presentation at that time. But, uh, they asked that I share it with you and let you know that they're looking at new projects that they could potentially have. This is a hundred and eighty-six page study, so if somebody wants it, I have one, one that you can look at.
Light reading.
Right, light reading for you. Um, I'd like to thank my staff, they're awesome. Like the mayor said, Mark took the new, uh, website, and they downloaded it, but Mark had to go in and personalize it, so. And he set up all of our training, all, every department had trainers in, so he really did a lot of work, so thank you for that, Mark, I really appreciate that. And, um, we're starting on the budget, so we'll be busy, so thank you, everybody.
Awesome, thank you, Anita, appreciate it, yeah. Uh, Tice, good evening, you have anything for?
I have four or five things in flux now, and I think I'll report, I'll have some finalization in the next meeting. Carrie's got some, something to share with you on.
Sure, Carrie.
I just, we're moving forward with the general execution, we are targeting, uh, a sale date on December fourth.
December fourth.
At noon.
At noon.
So we're, there's papers we gotta get back to the sheriff, and the notices to send out and publish, and that's gonna give us the time to do that.
So that was for the sale of Alpine House, on the Ford House steps.
At noon.
By the sheriff, four December, twelve noon, we're gonna sell Alpine House.
We got the demolition, uh, Steve, did you send me the, with us, was that you sent me those demolition figures?
I sent them to Anita, she probably already got mine.
I send them out to everybody.
Okay. Awesome, okay. Great, Carrie, thank you. Anything else? Okay, uh, moving on to my comments real quick, I'll be brief, so we can, uh, go ahead and book to go into the closed session. First off, uh, Tim, good evening, thanks again for, uh, coming tonight, we appreciate you and your team. Would you like to take a moment to, uh, introduce your team to us?
Sure, thank you, Travis, uh, so I've got a Cheyenne.
So I've got Shaihan, Agra, Connor, Kenzie, and Devin, they're from Wanesville, Lakeway, Toledo, and Sally.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for being here. You always do such a fine job to make these aldermen and city council members look really good-looking. So this is our first meeting back since our Missouri Municipal League Conference that we had in St. Charles, and I just want to thank those who were able to make it. I know life gets in the way, there were some that could not go, but it was a very vast amount of knowledge and I took away a lot. And so I just want to thank the team who, Fred and the team who got us all coordinated to go, and then for those who were able to make it, so another wonderful event. Trick or treat hours for Halloween, I'm sure most folks have seen it, but I just want to continue to stress it. But 5:00 to 8:00 PM in the City of St. Robert, we will be doing trick-or-treating. And I heard the City of St. Robert's mayor's house delivered some pretty good candy, so you might want to come out.
Gold-sized candy bars.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I like to have that stricken from the record. Reminder for Veterans Day Parade this year, it is in St. Robert, so it's on the 11th at 11:00. The parade will kick off probably around 11:20, but we do a bunch of things beforehand where we're going to recognize our Veteran of the Year, Master Sergeant retired Gene Blunt, who is a St. Robert resident and been the BFW Post 3176 commander for probably 30 years out of his time, something like that. He's our Veteran of the Year for the Wanesville St. Robert Chamber of Commerce, so we're going to recognize him. And so that's awesome. So if you can come out, it'll be great. If you want to ride in the golf cart with me, sign on up and we'll get you a seat. Anita talked a little bit about the Pulaski County Growth Alliance, yes? Yes, sir.
The chimney committee is going to have a program prior to the Veterans Day Parade.
Okay.
And because Command Sergeant Major Retired Bert Brogson is on with us, he's going to be our guest speaker at 9:00 AM that morning. So we tried to put that in at the same time. But I wanted to make sure I said that because he's present and I want to make sure that I hold him to give us a great introduction to Veterans Day.
Yep, absolutely. Well, thank you regimental, appreciate it for taking that on and being the guest speaker at the 9:00 AM ceremony at the chimney, so appreciate that. Look forward to hearing some great words from you.
We make it very much.
Awesome. Okay. Pulaski County Growth Alliance meeting is meeting next week, 15 October, 9:00, right here in this room, so if you're interested in coming, lots of great information. And lastly, I want to kind of throw this out there, I know that we do our Christmas in the Park and this is, this event is not to take away from our Christmas in the Park, but we wanted to come up with our very own Christmas tree lighting ceremony. And so in the City of St. Robert, on 1 December at 5:00 PM, which is a Monday, and it's going to last for two hours, and you're going to ask, how does a tree lighting ceremony last for two hours? Well, it's not just a tree lighting ceremony, it's the St. Robert Christmas Kickoff Spectacular, where we're going to kick off the holiday season. And we're going to have a bunch of vendors and hot dogs and candy, cotton candy. I'm sorry?
Mr. and Mrs. Claus.
Yep, Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be here. I heard Frosty the Snowman's going to be in attendance. And I just got confirmation that somebody knows the Grinch personally and is going to ask the Grinch if he's busy or sheet. And so we'll see, we might have the Grinch too. But there's going to be hot cocoa and cookies and cotton candy and hot dogs and a bunch of activities for kids. And then at 6:00 PM, thanks to Steve and his team for getting the electrical outlet put right out in front of the municipal center. We're going to turn the lights on to our Christmas tree. We're going to have Christmas carolers from the Marinatha Baptist Church, and then we're going to continue our activities until 7:00 PM. So please mark your calendars, 1 December, Monday, 5 to 7:00 PM.